Good morning, everyone. We will get our meeting started. Gabe, how about lead the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first agenda item is from the Urban Renewal Authority. Wood Creek Park discussion. Both of the gentlemen who are in charge of that had have left, one's in Columbus and the other's in Virginia, I believe. So they weren't able to be here. I told them to, you know, possibly get somebody else.
I think we need to, we can discuss this more. Get into executive session, but I think we need to just send a letter because all we really want to do to ask them to submit a redevelopment or development plan. Send a letter, you know, put that on and send it in. You're meeting with him, present it to us at August 5th.
Correct. You agree?
Yeah.
I agree. On our, on our, Mr. Taylor's here with us this morning and he's going to help us with the, the fund transition. So nice to see you again tomorrow. We have Mr. Tugwell here with us this morning and Gabe and Amy and Ruth. And. Yeah, Jill. Ruth, if you get a chance, can, can you have Amy or someone copy those two, those two things in the middle where I went to the economic conference? Make a copy for you and Tom and Allison. Okay. Next is our discussion and decision on postpone from the 1217 Bransfield Grant. Feature grants for the ARCA, including land and water conservation grant for Bay County pool. So, Gabe?
Would you like to discuss the land and water conservation grant first? All right. So the Brownfields Grant, again, I think you left off, there were some questions. Commissioner Brenneman, your question was in regards to the land on the Collins Middle School property. One of the priority sites we would be assessing under the FY22 Brownfields Grant, a community-wide assessment grant. And I just wanted to articulate that I appreciate your concern. But this grant would not do any property improvements whatsoever, all planning. So I think, again, it kind of adds to the reason we should be looking at this property. We don't understand all the property ownership. This provides an opportunity to try to understand that before any property improvements happen. So on, on that actual property, yeah.
That's a huge distinction for me because I'm how it was. Start making improvements on property that didn't belong to the county.
Sure, sure. And I, I can see how that, you know, I may convey it that way, but it's just planning. No, no, I mean, I mean, yeah, the, the goal is to eventually tear it down and rebuild something there. But this funding source specifically just helps us do the redevelopment planning, which includes like finding the, the funding sources that are going to help us do the cleanup before the demolition happens, before redevelopment happens. So this really just initiates that whole planning process.
Well, I read it, you actually had to put the process in there for three years. Basically, you put in what you're going to do next three years.
Yes, sir. It's a three-year grant.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why didn't you tell us that, Tom?
I feel like I may have, but there were a lot of questions. I feel like I've ma- I may have mentioned there are no property improvements included in this.
I definitely look at the book tip, have that in the table. But that makes it too complex.
I didn't either.
Another question I have is you mentioned that you haven't really had a lot of interest from two of the key stakeholders in this, at least thus far.
What, I mean, I think the proof isn't the pudding. I mean, we're going January of 2022 will be six years that property's been sitting there doing nothing. So yes, they're interested in talking about it, but have they done anything on the property quite yet? No.
Okay, so that's what you meant, that they're open to having some ideas during that. Like, I don't want us sworn into a municipality that's governed by a thing government and try to tell it, okay, well, we're going to come up with this big plan for you and then, you know, and ask for all this money for it and then have them, I mean, no, they have a right to say, we don't want the plan modified because they don't want a plan at all. That's a different matter.
Sure. I, I would not move forward with the project unless there was significant buy-in from those community members, let alone elected officials, to kind of articulate what kind of redevelopment they want to see in their community.
Did you present this to the city?
Not the actual proposal, but I did let them know that we are looking at this, this funding application. And they were, this expressed verbal support and I do have a letter of support from, from Billy and the best.
The issue, the issue I answered. And I read it.
I did too.
And, and I like it. My issue was that the county commission, basically, I see it the way I did this. And RCO, I see it, that, that, yes. Ruth, I think the county commission should have a little more control because we're talking about county tax assets in there. There's a lot of stuff in there that thinks, I think the county should have a little more say-so and direction on what properties.
Right.
That they feel that has to toe up to this, because we're in this.
Yeah.
And basically, this is, we're kind of responsible for all of this.
Sure, sure, sure.
I think the commission should have a little more, not, not necessarily control, but say-so on what properties would be what we consider the asset that they keep.
Right.
I'm saying we want to control it here.
Yeah.
But when it misses that in here, to me, I hope it should have.
Yeah, as, as the fiscal agent, I, I, I totally agree. And I do have in here that a local governing body will be publicly updated quarterly. I can add some more language in there that says specifically that we have some say over the prioritization of the environmental side assessments. I have some space to add some more language that bolsters the governance structure that says the county commission has say over how this process moves forward.
If we're awarded the grant too, and, and we can consult the legal camp without it, if the time comes, you, you and the city of Oak Hill and the Board of Education, will we start making expenditures?
Sure.
I feel like we need something in place, it's an agreement, this is how this is going to go.
We do have site access agreements that we put in place before any of our contractors go on-site for a property that doesn't, you know, belong to.
Well, I'm talking about in addition to what, what Commissioner Reese is talking about, you know, that we're going to have say over the priority, we're going to have input at a minimum.
Yeah, it could be a partnership, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But, but we can kind of agree with the city of, you know, memorialize that and, you know, use that same, I don't know, something like that.
Yeah. No, no, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that because I'm trying to get the same thing with solid waste authorities so that we can start doing enforcement of solid waste ordinances in municipalities. And that's been a bit of a struggle to get that articulated so we can work together and partner. I agree.
Okay, so. Is this the stuff that was dated, like, county commissioner silence?
I, I mean, I, I took out some things. Last year, they wanted to see more emphasis on opportunity zones. This year, they want to see more emphasis on distressed communities. And so I put some language around that, took out, I mean, I was really hoping to, I mean, I think something's opportunity as we build up, fit in their offerings. It creates a pipeline from Fayette County to WBEU Tech. That language in there, I took that out because it wasn't germane to the prompt this year. And then just talked more about environmental justice. They want, that's why I got docs last year, if not talking more about environmental justice. So put more information about, you know, on that, so. That means looking at disproportionately impacted communities and figuring out what kind of environmental contaminants might be exacerbating issues. One prime one is asthma. Our rate in Fayette County is higher than national average. So then how does this project address those concerns? So, I mean, and that's easy, asbestos, lead and mold in our communities exacerbate asthma, so.
In that case, I'm going to approve the application of the Brownfields Grant.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the Brownfields Grant. All those in favor?
Thank you, commissioners. The other agenda item was the land and water conservation grant. This is due December 30. I checked in with the program administrator for the state, John McGarrett. Thank you, sir. Just to make sure that this was an approved project, but also checked on the, the timeline for this application. And the funding and what we've been looking at and we're, we were anticipating this grant would come out in April and then we'd have this thing in by summertime and then hopefully the money back this winter, maybe early spring. But they got pushed back to where they're taking the funding, they're taking the applications now and the funding won't come out till fall of '22. So we would miss all of next summer for these improvements for the pool. And I'm not sure if Wayne had a chance to talk to you about these specifically. But it's roughly $60,000 in improvements, a pump and a filtration system. And my thing is, you know, Wayne has articulated to me that these could go at any moment. And so there's a potential that we could apply for the funding, but then the funding not come in until fall, we miss a whole year. And, and that the approvals need to happen immediately if we want to be prepared for the coming summer. And so that was my question about this, do we still want to pursue it? It's a, it's a, it's a heavy lift as far as federal grants go. And just for $60,000, $65,000, we'll still have a 50/50 match. So we'd be putting in, you know, a pretty lofty federal grant for $35,000. And my, my thing, my question was, would we rather just try to use some funding that we have access to right now to make these improvements so that we can get the pool in position to take advantage of the coming season?
Okay, so if I read this correctly, if we approve this, the price will be the same price when it's completed?
I called Mr. Wyatt on Wednesday last week to confirm that the price is still good and he gave me a verbal yes, that, that I will still honor that price. I have it in, in writing and an email, but that was from May.
I'll be still on it, I know what he has to say. Because of the $35,000 net, right?
Well, that would only be a match for next year, at the end of next year, providing that, that we get the grant. Ruth, could you? I'm sorry.
I was just saying, I'm just, you know, I don't know what kind of angle we make on the pool or anything like that, if you speak.
Ruth, if I'm correct, we could use the ARCA funds because this is a park and it's used for recreation to help fight against COVID. Correct?
The answer I got from the governor's office is you better show how what you're repairing was affected by COVID. So, and when we look at the fact that, and the impression I got from Wayne was that he said, he don't look at that, not the filtration system. They're talking about the filtration system or the pump?
The pump, but, you know.
He was, he thought this was for the filtration system.
Right, but I would put the grant in to cover both. You know, because it's only $7,000 for the pump, additional $7,000, they're going to be in there doing the work on the filtration system whenever it's a pump also. If you have both of them working together in conjunction, it's going to make for a more efficient system.
His concern is with the pump, you know, on the filtration.
Yeah, he, he's out, I would, I called him. I called him.
Might as well.
I would think so too, mobilizing twice to come in and make the repair, but also, I mean, and to speak to this idea of how the pool was impacted. Last year, we opened late because we couldn't get workers, we couldn't get lifeguards to come to the pool because of all the resorts had snatched them up because they saw an increase in visitation. So the pool was impacted by, you know, is adversely impacted because our area saw an increased visitation. And so we lost an ability to hire people. And so our window that we were open to potentially generate revenue was shorter.
So if you don't apply for that before, when you go, not apply for it at all?
We don't have any other, we have trails, there was discussion about the trails, but we don't have, I mean, that's going to be a much larger allocation from you all to match.
So here's my thing, if you apply for it and that's fixed before the grant comes through or doesn't come through, you spend the funds and the thought, you'll just wait for the grant concern, this grant does.
If it lasts that long.
Right, but if it does, then you have half of the pay for. But if you ready to pay it now, then you just have that money, you potentially lose half of the payment. That's how I see it. Well, I just want to know if the money is there outside of the ARCA funds because I don't, I don't want to make any magical wags to try to get it to fit our spending guidelines.
So it's not going to, you know, because it wasn't affected by COVID. It's been affected, how long has that company been down? Because?
I think it's original. I feel like it's the.
It had plenty of things that you just don't.
I'm thinking you can blame it on COVID, you can blame nothing.
But they've still not finalized it.
That's interim rules, yeah, and.
And potentially it's going to change the way.
Well, if you apply for it and then you see where we don't meet, meet the criteria, we can always pull.
And I will also say that I was telling my folks, we're setting a date, is earmarked for the park, so.
To me, I would say, to me, I would say apply for it and if we see we can't meet the criteria, we just pull. You can just not accept the grant if you don't think that you.
They'll just tell you no.
Okay.
See, I understood it the way he was articulating it, so if that doesn't work.
But we won't, again, we won't know till fall of '22, so it'll be a while. I mean, so, yes, then I, I, I guess I'm just, also not only making the case for not applying for the grant, but just when we look at the potential of developing the county park, I think Wayne and Angel have a lot of ideas. But the number one, one that seems like that's the top of the list priority is taking care of the pump and pool, so.
I think so, I think some assets for all people there, going in the pool, really, I hate to say this, why, yeah?
I mean, right. There, there are a lot of other issues we need to discuss for staffing and potential campsites and, and trails and all that stuff. But we have a lot of questions to answer before we can move forward though, as well as pool is pretty straightforward.
Well, so, so all of us know, the Challenge Academy will have a lifeguard class that we're going to be doing. So people that are local that's going through the Challenge Academy will have a license for lifeguarding. And diving and some other things that they're working on too.
Well, we could always consider sponsoring people for that class to get employees, you know, for the pool. Okay, well, I'm going to, we go ahead and apply for the water conservation grant.
I'll say. Okay, we have a motion and second to apply for those, the water grants. All those in favor? Let me ask you another question, did this price include the filtration and the pump?
That $59,000 is for the filtration system only. I have the pump, seven more thousand is with the pump, what we have quoted.
Can you get another paper like this from him for the pump?
That includes the pump also for them to do the installation work, I'm sure.
What's this one on the back?
That's the, that's for the fiberglass filtration system. The one on the front is the steel.
The fiberglass one's not cheap.
I think that was the concern.
Yeah, that's the question.
The concern is that.
Okay, well, we still have time on this and if we can get Wayne in to help you with the questions that we'll have, that would be good. But yes, please go ahead and fill out the paperwork for a minute.
I will be back in front of you with all sorts of things to sign. Thanks, commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Taylor. It's your turn.
He's not presenting in the executive session to get it right.
Okay, I made it out of here.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
No problem. And if you want me to explain, we did give one of those type grants, you want me to take two minutes to explain what, how we look at these Brownfields grants? You don't want to ask me too.
I'm good, I, I go with research.
I figured you read it, I mean, it's pretty simple.
I, I research.
Land question, that they, when you do the plan, you also do title work and that type stuff to straighten out who's there. Various things like that are in the planning space to make sure, and all the partners have to be on board as far as Oak Hill and whoever's involved.
Right.
Before you can move forward.
When it came in last week, we thought, okay, we're going to be making improvements to land that doesn't even belong to the state, the county, the city of Oak Hill, the Board of Education, anybody involved. That's what it sounded like. We didn't realize this was a planning grant. We, it sounded like it was a development grant, which is one of the reasons I kept harping on the dollar amount because I was like, there's no way we're going to be doing this amount of money. But for planning, it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. It's essential for getting.
Well, if, if it's accepted, there's also two or three other grants that you can follow as part of development, but what I read the process.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to discuss these other open things before we go into executive session so we don't?
Well.
Got that position description and the letter, I finished editing the letter, but I didn't.
I didn't see, you come back, okay, the 911 position, did you, did you?
Nobody sent me anything.
Well, I told you what I would do.
Okay, so we need to postpone that, I don't think, or do we?
I'm good with this, if it could, to me, it was, I mean, it's up to you all, y'all got something to add to it. GIS, they had GIS.
Oh, you mean adding the GIS to it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm.
You know, it's up to you all.
What were you saying, nobody sent you, oh, you mean us? Didn't you anything?
Yes. That is true. I don't know how that one slipped.
Do you have a printed copy of it somewhere?
This is from the other department.
Okay. Yeah, I did send her, oh, they got it.
You wrote it right out.
Well, I, Ruth wrote it and I heavily edited it. She put all the, all the facts in there and then I changed the, the flow, basically.
I don't add flow.
She's not very fluffy, so I.
I'm a yes, no, don't do it.
Right, so she, she put all the code citations, right?
What happened with the message we got this morning? Have you heard it?
Right, no, I think we need to discuss that in emergency session, actually. When I make my motion, I'll add that.
Tom was here early.
You were here early.
Yeah.
It was before 8:00.
Yeah, I, I've been here at 7, 2:00, 7:30, but I had been carried out.
Well, you might want to see somebody for that.
I would not.
Okay. I have a question on this one. Is there anything that states he and only he can make these purchases instead of the organization? Did I overread that?
No, that's not in there. That's not in there, we can add that there.
Yeah, I think that's important to do that.
Then you need to specify because we reimburse other organizations too.
1615 up.
I'll just add a loan right here.
Okay.
Does, does that work to clarify it, do you think, add a loan after the U in that last sentence?
Or except for standard. This is only a seven-up, it's nothing else. Want to make sure I clarified that? Suzie's eyes got big when I popped that. What's your thoughts, Tom? You're still thinking? You or you alone? To me, it's the same thing, you or you alone?
Well, when you say you alone, I mean, you're going with the can.
Yeah. But that letter's too.
Yes. Yeah, you're right, you're right. It, it just adds a slight bit more emphasis on it, given the.
Yeah. If the letter was to the fire association, to me, it'd be different, to deliver straight to him.
Well, I think there should also be one sent to the association. That said that they cannot, they cannot.
Well, I did tell them all at, at the meeting how, how it is, like about the discussion and of course, Mark Bass was here when we had the discussion. But I did tell all the members and they were all present at that meeting what the policy is, what Joe was authorized to, to approve himself and what, you know, had to go through Ruth and then.
Is there agreement with the fire association, fire departments, whatever?
I don't know. No, that's a good question.
Look the way the budget is, the way you have things done.
Is that, do you mean what's allocated for each one?
Yeah, and, and the way it's allocated, is there a certain agreement?
It's population.
Population, yeah, there's a certain agreement, the way it's spent and, and how it's handled.
Well, you got to sign those contracts, before those contracts.
Yeah. Because of the situations we ran into this year with, we thought letters were sent out and letters weren't, we just went by word of mouth. I think the letter would be more efficient and sufficient for the situation.
You mean to send them up, to send them a letter would be more prudent than to not send them?
Do we want to copy them on this letter?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
I mean, do we need to send them a separate letter?
There's 15 of them.
Well, I mean, if we copied all 15 on the letter we're sending him so they know what the policy is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as long as.
So just copy the fire association on this letter and that should handle it because it was here. I mean, you know, its president was here at the meeting. Was privy to the whole conversation and then he was at the meeting with all the fire chiefs that I discussed it.
And that covers all the points of the stuff.
Amy, I'm going to let you do that because you know how to squeeze all that. You can combine my paragraphs or whatever. Hey, girl. Yeah, Mark Bass. Okay, so I'm moved that we approved the, the letter with the changes we just discussed to Joe Crisp, our fire coordinator regarding spending, our spending policy and copy, with a copy to the fire association.
I'll say. Okay, we've got a motion and second on the letter going to Joe Crisp and the fire association, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Taking care of it. The other two things.
I did see a couple of things in this. Ruth?
Yes.
In the, in the 911 coordinator thing, there are just some, like QA isn't spelled out. Like QA isn't spelled out, like there's just stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't edit it. It was basically providing these types of issues.
Content, well, it's a PDF, so it'd be nice to have a Word. Oh, do you? Okay, so. I think, I think the substance is fine. Needs the, some of that stuff spelled out. Let me see this education.
I want to see.
No, I don't think, well, or quit, never mind, um. I think on experience, on the education experience, we need to make it our equivalent experience. Because it says has or will have an associate's degree within two years, has or will have a bachelor's degree or higher within five years. You know how we normally put that. I don't think somebody needs to have a bachelor's degree running the nine-one-one center. I think you need to have some program management experience.
You could say. An associate's degree is preferred, or something like, associate's degree or higher is preferred, not required.
And then that equivalent.
How, how do we normally word that with experience? I'll look, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Experience preferred.
Or, or the equivalent of experience, like you have, you have the degree or you have, you know, if we have somebody without a degree who's been running a nine-one-one center in other state for ten years, you know. I'd rather have that person than.
Anyone that was in the military that has M P and.
That kind of, right.
Background, I mean, that would be.
Look at the.
That would be wonderful.
All right. I think not just displays the leadership and organizational skills, but has experience. And I think they need to have supervisor experience, leadership. Experience. And this, about distance, the dis- distance to, distance themselves from gossip bias, that needs to come out, that's ridiculous.
Thank you.
It says displays ability to distance themselves from gossip. Well, yeah, I mean, but that's, but qualification, that's an expectation. That, I don't need you to be qualified to do, I need you to do it. Well, then, let's take another swing at it, put it on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Will you send me the word document though, because I can, okay.
Can you send me the word document too?
Yeah.
Send me one too.
Can you track your changes?
Yeah. I don't have to do that, I won't track it, no problem.
Yeah, it's a little, uh, proper room. All right, so I moved that we postponed the deputy director position's description to the fifth, to the, what's our meeting date?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Our seventeenth.
What is it? Seventeen? Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Tom is seconding. Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought Amy said the fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, and now I move we, um, go into executive session to discuss the farm transition. And I think we need to also discuss the, um, on an emergency basis, the resignation of key personnel this morning. Michael, do you think we're safe going into executive? So we had, um, the head of our day report center resign this morning with no notice, effective immediately. And it's, we don't have anybody out there really running it, so I feel like we need to discuss that.
A second. Executive session, we're going in at ten thirty-six. Okay, we're back out of executive session at eleven forty. Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Let me give a scoop, while we receive some legal advice on the, um, farm transition. Um, we were going to place a meeting on the fifteenth, an agenda item to discuss a timeline or vote on a timeline for that transition to take place. Based on the advice of our attorney. Um, and we discussed also, um, over the phone with prosecuting attorney Silberti, um, the resignation of the, um. Interim director of the day report center. And he advised us of, of, uh, his plans as the chairman of that community corrections board to address that. And we also discussed, um, the proposal of the board to hire a part-time employee. That's going to be on an agenda item in the future on the fifteenth, I think. Um, but we all did agree that, um, there's a critical need to have that employee at the D R C. So, um, we went ahead and, um, told the prosecuting attorney that absent any issues, that we would likely approve. Or we supported the hiring of that employee absent any further issues. And that was the extent of the discussion.
Okay, then that wraps up our meeting.
Okay, motion adjourned.
adjourned.